I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation, united in its manifold blessings, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Backs. Under a public announcement, a single announcement, that is to, I don't see the marshal here, but I wanted to thank Marshal Stein and the entire staff, the town hall staff, for the effort on Taste of Cape Creek, two days, really, really good. A lot of people could find promoted to town, promoted to restaurants, all those things that we'd like to see happen. So, thanks to, if you would do that, town manager, extend, town manager, the appreciation and the counsel to the staff, to all the staff in town. And, uh... Call of the public, Kerry?
Janell Smith, can I?
No, it's for Agenda Three.
I'm sorry. Kerry Smith?
Mayor and councilwoman Kerry Smith, I'm Cape Creek resident, and grateful that I've given me this opportunity. It's a very short request. Each time I read the minutes online and the supporting documentation, I have a difficult time sometimes figuring out what the objective of the items is. If you take the example of the water rates, the suggestion in today's agenda is that the water rates are not changing, but there is a change in the process by which the water rates would be set. It would be very, very helpful to an ordinary citizen to have a two or three sentence description in plain English of the objective of each resolution. What does it mean? Is it changing a process? Is it changing price? Is it changing zoning? Is it changing some feature of the agreement? As for example, the property owner states, I have to have four sets of documentation to know exactly what the proposed change is, and even with them, I'm not sure. So, a couple of sentences would be great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Backs. Call of the public is still open.
JP Maldonado?
Can we delay this until the marshal comes in?
Leslie Jensen?
Hi there, good evening. Leslie Jensen, Cape Creek resident and Farm Bureau insurance agent by the Dairy Queen. I just want to say that, yes, we needed a lot of rain. We got a lot of rain, but it was very disheartening that our trail system was really disrupted. I just want to say a phenomenal thank you to Bambi and her staff for the work that she's done in helping put the trails back together along Schoolhouse Road, and I know she's continuing to do some additional work. I did call and thank Bambi myself, but I just want everybody else to know it's greatly, greatly appreciated, and the trails are awesome. So, thank you.
Thank you. Call of the public?
Okay, JP.
Yeah. I think you can hear me without a microphone. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, honorable citizens, I'm about to head up to Colorado. We decided to move. Been patrolling this area, first with the posses since the year 2000, and then continuing with the marshal, and this has been a kick. I've enjoyed it. I've enjoyed meeting the four Cs, that's the Cape Creek Canine Corps, the old dance and yelp when they see the vehicle approach. I'm gonna miss all of you, but I wanted to thank you for having allowed me to patrol your beautiful community. And, Marshal, we're gonna keep working with you soon. Any questions, any comments?
Yeah, don't leave.
I promised to be back with my wife, she's a baseball addict, for the preseason, so we'll be back around March or whenever it starts. I'm a rookie man, but I concede that, so, anyway, thank you all. Marshal, permission of Marshal's say?
There's anyone else who should speak on the call of the public? Okay, we will continue then. Town manager, report.
Mayor and council, two quick things. Taste of Cape Creek, as we spoke about before. By next meeting, I should have a financial report on that, which will be out already due, I'm gonna do it today. We actually have the town finance director, actually a Canadian class, so we can do something with the rental sales and tax production, so we're gonna internalize that ourselves. Second thing, I want to do a report on trail, we'll have that in number three. Since the rains, a lot of washout, we're doing a lot of trail work, so I want to give you an idea of what we've been doing with trails, some of these and what have you. When I spoke to you, I want to have that for you on number three. Thank you.
There are no consent agenda items this evening, so we'll look into it in general. Just to note before we proceed, agenda item number three, the applicant has asked for a continuance for, so for anyone who is in the audience for that, I'm going to ask council to continue that item. Let's start with number one, discussion by the county on approval of Resolution R. 2014-15, authorizing the mayor to approve a development agreement between, among the towns Cape Creek and New Vista, the series, one LLC and Stagecoach Village Condominium Association, providing for the conveyance of land to the town, the availability of common areas in Stagecoach Village for municipal uses, and the deferral of certain fees. But I'll start with the county director.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, last fall, about forty percent of Stagecoach Village development through a judicial foreclosure changed hands to a company known as New Vista, that's represented in this document. The elders, representatives met with a limited number of council, the inner-town management staff, and asked that we look at ways to help the development and the town to kickstart the project. We looked at things that had been approved through a development agreement in 2007. We could not find a signed agreement, however, we went through the approved minutes of the council from that, when that agreement was approved by vote of six to one. That agreement addressed things such as signage, transfer of property, parking within the development, landscaping. Since that time, I've been working with the town legal staff, and our legal staff has been working with the legal staff of New Vista, to come up with ways to memorialize all those agreements within a new agreement. And, basically, this agreement does is, one, it transfers that land to the town, finally, within ten days of the final last party signing this agreement. Two, it gives the right for undeveloped spaces within the development to have certain fees or capacity charges for water and wastewater to be deferred through a process over a five-year period, within a ten-year period of this agreement. And, who that, the association itself, property owner association, will determine who is able to go through that process, they will handle, handle it. No other fees are being waived or deferred, there are no fees being waived at all, but only capacity charges are being deferred. So, building permit fees, everything else will be paid at the time of building permit issuance. In exchange, the town will be given the use of the property for special rents, for, I believe, a period of ten days, for a period of ten years. The town is responsible for cleaning up after itself after each event, and the town has the right to use the space, and will coordinate with the owners of the property owner association to determine what dates are available throughout the year. With that, I will answer any questions, or defer to the town attorney and town manager.
Council, questions? Councilman Durkin?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Corwell, as I read through the agreement, the definition of when the town could use the common area for certain town events was a fixed number of days per year, I think that was ten days per year. There was no definition of when those, there was no definition of when those days might occur, but in my reading, our use of the common area was secondary to any uses that the owner may have. So, my question is, how does the town, in the context of this agreement, assure itself that things like the Taste of Cape Creek, which are scheduled at a certain time each year, the town will always, throughout that ten-year period, be able to use the common area when they need it for such events?
Councilman Director, members of council, I believe that Taste of Cape Creek was foremost in the minds of people crafting this document, and that would get the top priority. The thought was that they're at a certain time during the year, but we would work closely with the property owner association for other events throughout the year. So, I think Taste is not referred to in here, but it does say that we'll coordinate closely. If you wish to add language, you can do so.
All right, I don't have any, no, I don't have any other questions. Councilman Monacino, would you?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to include a few quotes here with regard to the documents. The 1991 agreement is nullified?
Looking at the other little council?
Whoever has the answer. Councilor Monacino, members of the council, this does not, this agreement does not change anything in the agreement. I believe that it's entirely consistent with the agreement, and so, since what's already concluded in the 1991 agreement has already taken place to extend the dimmer, it's more wise, it's an independent agreement than this agreement.
Okay. So, the 2007 agreement is not signed by any of the parties? Okay, so the document we have in front of us now, it's titled First Amendment and Restated Development Agreement. Which one are we amending and restating? The 2007 one?
Mayor Vice Mayor, Councilor Monacino, yes, the agreement has been amended and restated to the 2007 agreement.
Okay. All prior and contemporaneous agreements are merged into this document. So, anything that was in 2007 is merged into this First Amendment and Restated Agreement. Thank you.
Councilman, are there questions?
No, I have no questions.
Councilman, much questions?
No.
Councilman, specific questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Ian, if this is approved and the association marks one of the purchasers of these places to be able to use this deferment, who's responsible for ensuring that that company, whichever it may be, actually pays, and what happens if they go bankrupt? Who's chasing that? Who's responsible?
I'm going to defer to the town manager, because he had the most negotiation of that particular issue. My council sits here.
Mayor Vice Mayor, to my knowledge, the association has assured that the town that these fees will be paid, but I don't want to cover the fact that it's possible that the town could be left without requiring, having to pay. The big concept is that the association will assure that the payment is made.
They assure that the payment is made, but if they're not bankrupt, who's responsible at that point?
Mayor Vice Mayor, subject to a claim of bankruptcy, which probably would not yield money just because of the amount of fees, the town would then bear the cost of the fees that had been deferred and now are paid.
Vice Mayor, any other questions?
I'm sorry, council, town manager, Ian held with this. I learned the impression that if those fees don't get paid, we'd have a first position lien, and the balance of the unpaid fees.
Right.
So, that's what secures the payment. If it's not paid, we could afford to close on the property.
Correct.
Right? If they default, if it doesn't get paid, it's not like the town's, the taxpayers are sort of putting the bill, the guy who owns the property gets to hang on to it. It's not, they're not going to have a home state exemption, it's not residential property. We would have a first position lien and be entitled to foreclosing.
Be true case of interest in your property.
Correct. Okay. Which we could then sell to recoup our fees.
Councilman Durkin, additional questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Jankowski, have we, in the past, entered into an agreement like this where fees were deferred, and if so, what mechanism did we use to track the deferral and when the payments were made, make sure nothing was missed?
My understanding is, Councilor, my understanding is, we have not entered into an agreement like this before. This would be the first time. My discussion with finance directors, they would set up the accounting and the spreadsheets for us to track the fees that are deferred, what payment cycles required, whether it's first year, second year, third year. We would do that internally ourselves. If they did not make a payment, we would make those collections as required. So, we would be internalized through our own department.
Thank you. Mr. Corwell, of the units that are presently candidates for the development and for whom these capacity charges may be made, can you tell me, after they were all developed, what would be the difference between the final total capacity charges the town would collect versus this $375,000 maximum that's in the tender agreement?
Councilman Durkin, I don't know the answer to that. It's not based on the percentage of properties or the square footage, it's based on the meter size for the remaining units, so that's really an unknown at this point. I could bring together some numbers and come back to you with that.
It's an unknown because?
Of the meter size of what the unit is by age of?
I don't want it serviced and other development.
Correct.
How many total units are the total of that?
Of the 105,000 square feet, I believe about seventy percent is still available. In terms of number of units, the units are typically about 1500 square feet, some buildings are, you know, 12,000 and undivided.
Thank you. No further questions. Mayor and council? Just full point of reference, there's no change in the value of the deferred versus non-deferred. The most they can defer is $375,000. So, if the total fees totaled 600,000, the town would receive the full 600,000. There's no difference, you would receive the full hundred percent. You could only defer off the 375,000, so there's no loss in the fees to the town.
Thank you.
No, I appreciate that. I was interested in what the ratio was between how much we're deferring and what the end result was. And...
Councilman Monacino?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to follow up on your Vice Mayor's comment, should one of these units default, and we have no control over who goes in there and what their business model is, and they fail to make the payments, we then have a, and they're bankrupt. We have a first lien, we take over, and now we're in the real estate business. Now we own, no?
Yeah, and we liquidate the whole things, and we take the advantage of that unit. And we don't have to be burdened with whether or not we sell it for market value, we only need to recoup some small percentage of its market value in order to receive whatever the balance of deferred fees was. Okay. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, any question?
Quick question, Ian, I think this one's for you. The piece of land that there was subject to the original development agreement that they're now going to finally be dedicating to the town, what is town's cost of maintenance for that, that you personally, or what do you anticipate it will be?
Vice Mayor, the property is essentially undisturbed desert, choy flats. I don't anticipate, I'm thinking of trash.
Which we probably are doing anyway. Okay, thank you.
Councilman Durkin? Thank you. Town manager, Mr. Corwell, what's missing from me here is the pitch. We, there's this, as far as I'm concerned here, there's this unquantifiable, maybe this will foster development. Where's the analysis, if any has been done, that gives us justification to feel optimistic that that's the conclusion? In other words, why, other than we think it's a good idea, why should the town enter into this agreement? Where's the hard data that says this is a, we've done the research, you know, we've looked, we've done similar to comparisons or something, okay, other than we've got a good feeling that it might work out? Where's the hard data that says this is the right thing to do?
Councilman Durkin, nobody predicted the economic downturn, the town doesn't project what's going to happen. I believe the idea from the beginning has been what we can do to remove obstacles or what we can do to facilitate elements of the agreement that were approved seven years ago, such as the right turn lane in, or left turn lane in, along the road, the signage, doing whatever we can to help the development, but they are still responsible for making payments and looking out to marketing their own buildings. So, it wasn't the town's duty to predict what the success rate would be, just to help the developer to, and as I said, not waive fees, but defer them, and the town would get paid through this process.
Thank you.
Additional questions from council? Ian, I'd be sorry to begin with those assumptions. The purpose of this agreement is?
Purpose of this agreement, Mayor, is to move forward with the development, memorialize the agreement from 2007 and the elements that we approved then, the signage, turn lanes, parking, the parking is down compliance. The town will get the use of the development for ten days a year, the town will defer fees up to $375,000, not waive, town will eventually get paid, the town will be given a piece of land free and clear, north and east of the development across the street.
Currently, Stagecoach Village has how much occupancy?
I believe it's about thirty percent, Mayor.
And this agreement is basically would be between the town and these condominium, future condominium units?
The property owner's association and New Vista, as a forty percent owner, they would be responsible for carrying out this process amongst themselves. The town would be dealing with the permit issuance and keep track of the fees that are deferred.
And the anniversary of permit issuance, that's basically the other way of saying, year one, year two, year three, until...
Correct.
Additional questions?
Yes, of course.
Councilman Monacino?
New Vista series, they own forty percent of this Stagecoach Village?
I believe that's the case, yes.
And someone else owns the other?
There's another forty percent owner, and then the remainder are different property owners of units.
Okay. Do those other forty percent and the other owners, do they owe deferred charges as well?
I believe the property owner's association will determine who amongst all of the property owners will have the right to take advantage of that program.
Let me rephrase.
I believe it's available to all property owners within the development.
But the other forty percent owners are not signing this document? How does the homeowners control, council?
I'm Mayor Vice Mayor of the top of my mic. It's not necessary to control the property. What this is basically saying is that New Vista and the association would be responsible for deciding who is eligible, and also with the understanding that only those who give the town the first lien are eligible, but to take the town out of the equation of how to decide who gets it. So, you don't, it doesn't matter whether they're a party, but they're still, they can still be in the pool, and it's up to New Vista and the owner's association to make that permission. I assume that those, the other entity is a member of the owner's association.
Additional questions?
I just want to point out that the Stagecoach Village Condominium Association is also a party in this agreement, it's not just New Vista. So, that association is, represents all of the ownership within the condominiums. And if you read section 5.1, it says that the association itself will make available to the members as selected by the association who own unfinished commercial condominium units within the property. So, the deferral will be made available to anybody who owns an unfinished, unbuilt down unit, not just those owned by New Vista.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional questions?
First of all, I have to form this as a question. I would like to apologize if I came across as accusatory, asking for that data. Data is my life, so I get excited about it, if I may. The, where, can someone please tell me where, in crafting this agreement, how was the figure of $375,000 provided? Maybe that'll help me understand, you know, what the logic was.
I believe, for instance, the attorney involved, but the attorney with Dickinson Wright worked with the attorney for New Vista, to come up with an appraised value of the 55,000 square feet on the other side of the property, determine that as the cap of deferred charges, if I recall that correctly.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions from council?
Yes? Thank you, Mayor. These charges were deferred in 2007.
Councilman Monacino, I can give you a little bit of history on the project in that regard. When Stagecoach Village was first built, the developer rationalized that he paid, of the four development fees, two were based on square footage, two were based on meter size, and said, I'm building this much square footage, I will pay these two elements upfront. I don't know what the meter size is going to be, because these are condominium units coming in a later date. Don't know what each unit is going to demand in terms of what meter size that was left unpaid, and up to the individual condominium unit owner to come in and pay at the time building permit issuance.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions from council?
Although there does not seem data to support the number, the 375,000, that is the threshold of where this project succeeds? Is that?
That's the number, that was agreed upon, yes.
Anything else from council?
Anything from the applicant, or anybody associated with New Vista? Anything from the applicant or anybody associated with New Vista? May I?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor of the District of Council. My name is, my name is Craig Turbovich. I am an owner of six of the units at Stagecoach Village. I've been an owner for six years. I have been asked by Brian Ferguson of New Vista to say a few words on his behalf tonight to the council. He's asked me to express his apologies for not being able to be here this evening, and he's asked me to express his views, that he thinks this is truly a win-win agreement for the town and the owners of Stagecoach Village. In his words, he asked me to say, lowering the upfront cost of development by deferring certain development fees, which under this agreement will be fully paid over time, shall be a catalyst for developing the approximately 58% of Stagecoach, which remains unimproved, and bringing it to its full potential. Additionally, Mr. Ferguson asked me to thank Vice Mayor Trent for his support during this past year, without Mr. Trent's desire to creatively promote economic development in Cave Creek. Mr. Ferguson believes that this development agreement would not have been successful in being negotiated. Thank you.
The public comment is still open, Mr. Councilor?
I have no speakers here.
Mr. Smith?
Mary Smith, Cave Creek resident. I'm a little confused on some of this. To begin with, there is a, not a signed agreement in 2007, as I understood what Mr. Corwell said, there is the intent of an agreement derived from the minutes. So we're now creating an agreement. Is that correct? Thank you. I don't see why, for not creating an agreement, following up on Councilman Durkin's suggestion, we can't specify a band of days in which the 10 days would be exercised, as opposed to leaving it open-ended. We know that the Taste of Cave Creek will be in October. Instead of relying on good faith, couldn't we say we need two days in October? And we need so many days in other portions of the peak period? Because if it were up to my discretion and it became very busy, and I was the owner, I'd put all the days, that's somewhere between the end of July and the beginning of March, and it'd be perfectly, it'd still be 10 days, but they might not be quite as valuable, 10 days. Similarly, I worry about giving the discretion to what enters Stagecoach Village to the Stagecoach Village Association. It seems to me that it would be perhaps not in the association's best interest to have tattoo parlors and nail salons, but considering that relative to empty space, perhaps it would be. I don't know. And so I would like to see where the town had some approval, right, to waiving the charges for subsets of the tenants. The third is, this is just capacity charges, is that what we're talking about? We're not talking about variable costs associated with either wastewater or water services. Is that correct?
Just that.
Okay, thank you. Those are the things that I would be particularly interested in.
Thank you. Mr. Moore?
Mr. Mayor, members of the town council. My question, I came in a little bit late here, so maybe some of this has been addressed, but many years ago, when this project was being debated at the planning commission and in front of council, the town came to an agreement with the former owners with a set of stipulations, 20 some odd. One of which was the granting of property from the Stagecoach Village properties across the street, across Galloway, to the north, to preserve a large area, several acres, I don't remember how many acres, but probably somewhere in the area of eight acres, 10 acres. As there is a standing area of cactus there that was to be preserved. And when I spoke with Ian recently on this, it seems like that property was never transferred. Is that correct, Ian? So it sort of fell through the crack. And I'm only suggesting that the council take a look at this and see if it is worth renewing the town's interest in preserving that particular piece of property and disallowing it to go into the public area for sale, because there are some unique plans there. We did studies, and again, this was, what was it, eight years ago, 10 years ago, something like that? And it just, the town's vested interest in this property, which was stated in agreements which everybody came to, just sort of fell through the crack. And I'm only suggesting that you renew the town's interest in that as part of this deal, so that we capture that property. As part of this. Great, thank you.
Thank you, Anna Marzolo, Cave Creek. I have a very great idea. Take the $375,000, so we stop subsidizing developers in this town, because ultimately it's going to come back to the taxpayers and the property owners and the law users. I know that. But take that money and put it as a down payment toward the bottom-cry property, 19 acres, it is for sale, and make a wonderful community area, community center, Taste of Cave Creek can be held there every year, you can have whatever events you want there, and you would own it. Vice Mayor Trent, you need to tell them the cost of foreclosing on a property, takes about a year, and there's a tremendous cost involved. Thank you so much.
The public comment is still open. Does anyone else wish to speak on this matter? Yes, sir.
Ty Bucy. Mayor, council members and citizens, my name is Ty Bucy. My wife and I own Slawn Milo, which is located in Stagecoach Village, and I know there was some question regarding the Taste of Cave Creek, and I can tell you that that is paramount for us. We get more business over those couple days of new people that have moved into this area. So as far as from our perspective, that's the number one priority as a business owner down there. If we could do Taste of Cave Creek every other month, we would do that at some point. So that's been a big plus, so I just wanted to make that comment.
Did you hear that, Adam?
Can you take feedback?
Public comment is still open on this end. Mr. Turbovich, can you return to the podium, please?
Yes, sir.
In the discussion on having with my fellow council members that are listening, the one thing that caught my attention, among the many, is the data supporting the conclusion, in this case, the conclusion being the council would vote in favor of this document so things can move forward. You mentioned catalyst, could, I understand the word, I know what it means. Is there, do you have any data that you could offer as to why this particular approach will be the catalyst that moves Stagecoach Village from 30% occupancy to 50 or to 60?
I don't have data, but I do have experience in commercial real estate. I'm a commercial real estate broker by my trade. And I know a big challenge for any building owner is, in the beginning, is getting it started, funding the acquisition, funding the improvements to finish the product, project, build out the tenant improvements inside, put the restroom in there, all those things. And if you have to bring a tenant in, you're going to have some time of vacancy. So any little bit that can help get that project completed is very important. Those budgets are very tight for all businesses. So I see it, I see it in the day.
Okay, thank you. Okay, before we go to, before I ask for motion, Vice Mayor, you wanted to make a, if I may just briefly reply to one of the comments from the public.
Is that clarification? Two things that are very important. One, this is not a subsidy of the developer to date. These fees have gone uncollected, and if the town doesn't act creatively, they may never get collected. What this does is it helps make the project viable, to ensure that businesses go into that vacant space as soon as we get businesses, we get cash registers, and with those comes sales tax receipts, and the fees are not being waived, they're being deferred, and we'll collect them in full over a period of 10 years. We've already gone seven-plus years without collecting them, and we owe this to our residents so that we can start to bring in some additional sales tax revenue. As for the comment about foreclosing on the lien, yeah, that takes time and it costs money, but those costs will come back to us as well and get stacked onto the principal, from my understanding. Frederick, can you correct me if I'm wrong?
Correct.
Correct? Okay, thank you. So, we know doing business comes at a cost, but we take that as acceptable risk in order to sort of jumpstart activity in that development. With that, I'll make the motion to approve resolution R. 2014-15, a resolution of the mayor and town council of town of Cave Creek, Arizona, authorizing the mayor to approve a development agreement between and among the town of Cave Creek, New Vista Series 1A LLC, and Stagecoach Village Condominium Association, providing for the conveyance of land to the town, the availability of common areas at Stagecoach Village for municipal uses, and the deferral of certain fees.
Motion has been made and has received multiple seconds. Vice Mayor?
Shortly after this council began its term, the mayor and I met, had a serious agreement actually with the then new owners of the majority of the development, which is this New Vista entity that we're in, one of the entities we're entering into the agreement with. We put our heads together, and I think that we were sort of the catalyst behind coming up with some creative solutions to help make that development economically viable. We've all been there, we're all there last week for Taste of Cave Creek. It's a gorgeous development that fell on hard times with the collapse of the economy. We need to jumpstart our local economy here, and the cost of paying to play in our town is very high. And if we can defer some of those costs to help bring small businesses into the community, I think it's our responsibility to do that rather than to have it sit dormant. So while we were the catalyst for it, I want to thank staff for helping get this agreement, for helping come to this agreement. It didn't have anything to do with the negotiations, we just kind of put our heads together, brainstormed some thoughts and passed it off to staff. Paid attention to it along the way, but fortunately, there were very few moments where there were log jams, we had to get involved, and I thank you guys. I think this is a great resolution for the town, and I would urge my colleagues to support this wholeheartedly.
Councilman Durkin, did you have the second? Move his clothes. Are you accept the second?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Moore. Thank you. First, a piece of data I think might be helpful. Based on the square footage and what I took to be about the average size of the buildout, it would appear to me that this $375,000, anyway, if you work through some, you know, about 5,000 square feet per inch area, you're looking at about $17,000 over 20 units to get to the $375,000. The point I'm trying to make is that I would take it to, it appears to me that every potential business owner is likely going to qualify for some form of deferral, based on my guess is the average size of the units. I don't know whether that's, that's important to me, I don't know if it's important to me. The, that aside, I can't presently support this as it stands for two reasons. There's nothing protecting, guaranteeing the town that they will have access to the common areas on particular times of the year that are particularly important to the town. If I'm going to support this, I need to see some language that protects the town in that regard. And even more importantly, presently, the town is not protected from business failures, as I understand it. If one of the businesses potentially could go in here, his capacity charges are deferred, two years later he goes out of business, there's nothing in here that says that New Vista or somebody else involved in, on the other side of the equation from the town, is then responsible for picking up those deferred payments and making sure that five years after the building permit was issued to that particular business owner, the town will in fact have to collect these capacity fees. Presently, that language is not in here. Without those two stipulations, I can't support this. Do you have a friendly amendment, Councilor? Take the dates first, the ten days? I don't have an amendment that would address the specific language that I think needs to go into this. That's too, that's... Were I to have voiced an amendment, we would be, and that, if we discussed it and approved it, we would have then approved a, having the town enter into a agreement, a language of which is something we discussed among ourselves and didn't have written down. So I'm not, I'm not an attorney, I'm not comfortable with crafting an amendment right now, but I would feel, would, would put the language used going to this document in that. I would prefer directing staff to restructure the document with the appropriate language and then bring it back before us. Now, if somebody else up here thinks they can put out that language and the six, and a majority of us find it acceptable, I'll be fine with that. I can't judge with that. I would think here's something simple, that the town has guaranteed 10 days and the right of choice of those days. Is that too simple for the world of jurisprudence, Councilor?
Mayor Vice Mayor, it's not too simple, unless all the bonds, the other party agrees to it. Why I would just say is 10 days of the town, of the town's choosing, is it?
Okay.
I'm sorry. I'm reading this, and it says to me, the town's here shall be subject to prior availability, and the association shall use reasonable efforts to coordinate and mutually agree upon the scheduling and use of the common areas by the town. I can wordsmith that a little bit better for myself, saying that the town shall have the right of first refusal for dates at its discretion, and shall be granted those dates by the association, subject to prior availability, or should be granted use of those dates, the granting of which shall not be unreasonably withheld, or something of that nature. In other words, if the town hasn't notified the association and it wants the dates, and somebody from within the association or some outside vendor can say they want the dates, and then the association, the owners would be on them to just check with the town, make sure it's not a conflict with our schedule by giving us that right of first refusal. I mean, as far as that goes, I mean, I think that would handle it. I don't, I think it's in the spirit and the intent of the agreement, we approve it, and it would be incumbent upon the other parties of the agreement to then decide if they wanted to execute it or not. As for your, the second part of your concern, that's that lien provision, that's the assurance that we get paid. If the fees don't get paid, then we foreclose on the property. We own it, we sell it, either in a fire sale or a fair market sale, or whatever the case may be, after we foreclose on it, those fees come back to the town, the proceeds of that sale.
Yeah, that sounds like a real exciting endeavor for an attorney, but to an engineer who likes things simple, I don't want to go through all that, of course, Puckey, I just want to be sure that once this agreement is signed, if the business owner defaults, I don't have to hire anybody to make sure I get paid.
Mike, the world doesn't work that way. If a party to a contract defaults, the lawyers have a party. I mean, that's just my, I don't go.
Right, but I think we can recraft this with the language to protect the town from that, and the lawyers that are going to have the heyday will be the lawyers between the business owner and New Vista, and not the town of Cave Creek. And speaking of lawyers, your lawyer, I mean, this was really shining through.
And speaking of lawyers, your lawyer opinion is really shining through.
Really? I mean, I try to think on five, I mean, I suggest you believe in counsel, but so much more simple, it's a simple requirement of statement, it gets the date, and we get to choose what days they have in the deed. Mr. Smith makes a good point. The fact that we could be forced into having to select, gee, do we want August through July? Not exactly a good choice.
No, I don't disagree with you there. I would accept yours as a friendly amendment.
It was friendly.
The second of Councilman Durkin's concern, we, that is not an attorney.
Well, let's take value from our councilor here. You heard my concerns, Ms. Bismann. If we were going to craft an alteration to this here tonight, what form would that take?
Mayor Vice Mayor, Councilman Durkin, I heard you correctly take the form that it's something on the order that if a party does not pay its deferred fee within 30 days of the due date, then I think what you're suggesting is that the association and/or the owner shall be responsible for paying that, making that payment. Am I understanding you correctly?
Yes, ma'am.
So, better way, we totally crafted, of course, to be dependent on the other party to pay.
Just an analogous situation to that, Councilman Durkin, would be if I own a piece of property that's in the homeowners' association, and I sell the property to a new party, and that buyer, the homeowners' association says to me, "Well, we're not gonna approve of that sale unless you, as the seller, guarantee that your buyer is gonna pay our HOA dues." Well, A, I would never agree to that, and I don't think that New Vista or the association is gonna do that in this case. But B, what's to say that then that party who gives you that indemnity or that guarantee that doesn't default and you have to get the lawyers involved later anyway? I mean, I just, I think it's sort of a false sense of security for you there.
None of that's resonating with me, and it could be because...
You giving it my best shot?
It could be because of my ignorance, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna stick by my guns here. It is our responsibility, gentlemen, to craft an agreement that is in the best interest of the town. And I think it's certainly in the best interest of the town to have at least an extra layer of protection, guaranteeing that should these businesses, a business fail, we're still gonna get our money in an expeditious and financially, you know, efficient way, instead of spending money to get our money. It just makes perfect sense to me. Again, I'm not a lawyer, so I might be missing something, but I don't think so.
Okay, with the one amendment in regard to the days accepted, this is a bit more involved. I'll raise, yeah, with discussion, Councilman McGuire.
I think that the assurance that we're looking for is indeed the assurance that was proposed by the Vice Mayor. This is the way the world works, I think is correct. Secondly, we seek to be partners with our businesses, and I think that partnership has evolved very nicely, and I think that we can, I don't see the amendments as substantially changing the nature of the agreement, and that's really a question for Ms. Bismann.
Mayor Vice Mayor, members of the council, I think, I agree with you, they're entirely in the spirit of the agreement, but nevertheless, it will require the agreement of the other party to make those changes.
Can you repeat that exact language for us, just so we know we're voting on more or less, if you don't mind? Or maybe Carrie, that's a question for you.
About the days? The town is guaranteed 10 days of use and the right to choose the day, but no?
When I heard the name...
No, you used another verb.
I said, I believe I said, 10 days of the town choosing.
As long as we're getting across the point that we're guaranteed 10 days, and we have the right to choose those 10 days, so we're not cajoled into July and August.
If I might suggest that, yeah, that it might be helpful to put into that, if it goes to the town, the town choosing that the town will designate those days, and I don't know what's reasonable, six months ahead, a year ahead, so everybody has full certainty of those days, I want you to agree.
I could see the town being able to do that, but it takes the Cave Creek, since it seems to be a tradition that falls in October, but I wouldn't want to have the town bound necessarily, because something could come up, some idea could come up, and you would say, "I like it next month."
Mayor, I'm not just sure I understand, some of that would be a combination of what I think with the Vice Mayor's suggestion, 10 days of the town choosing, subject to a right of first refusal, so if the association gets a request for other days, it would come to the town first and say, "I'm about to put these days on the calendar at that point," in the town, saying, "No, we want those days," or...
That's a good protection. Yeah, so I think it's simple. It says, "The towns here shall be subject to prior availability, and the town shall have the right of first refusal," first of all, on that prior availability or so. I don't know, Fred, maybe it's not so simple. I'm doing my best here.
I think I've enough that we can craft something that reflects what I heard.
Okay, the second line, we're gonna start with Councilman Durkin, this is for a hard complex. Councilman McGuire, you still have us, or?
No, I stated what I think. Well, I think it's unfortunate that the 2007 agreement wasn't actually invoked and gone through. We wouldn't be sitting here discussing this at that point, at this point. First off, New Vista is not the first owner here. There's no guarantee New Vista or even the association will not be here, and not be, gone, and therefore will be stuck on a hook, again, bringing, I mean, recovered costs. And frankly, the town is not in the business of real estate, it shouldn't be.
Councilman La Macino?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, this project has sat empty since 2007, so here we are, seven years later, and we've come up with a plan. There are very few guarantees in life. Who will buy a unit? What their business model is? Will they be successful? I have no idea. Do we have any evidence, empirical evidence, that a similar set of circumstances has been agreed to? Or do we have any assurance that this is totally flawless? No. But it's a plan, and it gets the ball rolling, and I'll support it.
Councilman Bunch?
I see a real benefit of this, and the benefit that I see is right now there's a lot of what's called non-performing assets sitting there, both for the property owners and for the town to create conditions. As soon as, as, as tax rates is going there, we're gonna start collecting sales tax. Sales tax is a good thing, it keeps us from having to come to you guys and ask for the credit property tax, which I would never, ever in my near support. So, if we can make a lot of sales tax, I'm good with that. The other good thing is we have a group that comes here every year and asks us for money. It's the CCMA, and more members there, the more business, and every member of us, y'all have the less money hopefully they'll need from us, and we'll be able to give, to give the residents money away from the general, general fund. One more thing, I'm definitely gonna support this, I think in the law, that's a good idea. If people go, "Yeah, businesses fail." The, I don't much like the safeguard that we've got, but it is a safeguard, it's probably the only one I think that we could probably get legally that could make any sense. And the last item is, I wanna tell our friends here that moved here from Chicago, that before they came here, back when there was a cattle country, what happened? Choy, a cactus, was with the gasoline, it burned himself.
There's a promotion.
I don't have anything else, really substantively on this subject to add, but I would like to respond to one comment from my colleague, Councilman Spitzer. I would encourage you to reconsider and to support this. I know you say the town's not in the real estate business, but we are in the business of supporting our merchants. You know, when Councilman McGuire and I agree on something that the stars have aligned, I think that this is really important. We got, you know, something like 60%, maybe 70%, we got two numbers here this evening, of that development that is unoccupied. We see what, when that development is active, what it does in terms of the draw that it is for the community, brings people from outside the community in there to do business. And the fact is, is we absolutely are in the real estate business. We have parks, we have facilities where we run our utilities departments, and to the extent that the town is in first lien positions on other developments and properties in the town for fees that are owed as projects come online, if they don't get paid, then we end up with a lien on them. And this is no different than that same lien right, which we already have in the existing agreement. In fact, I think all we're doing is extending that agreement, it's just, we're creating a mechanism to make the project economically feasible and deferring the collection of those fees, which we are not right now collecting anyway, because the project is dormant. And I think, effectively, there's no cost to this to the town. I mean, so I would encourage you to support this.
The town has, as we all know, entered into agreements with our nonprofits for their contributions and to the community, and that's always been a struggle for the town. Every year we do that, it becomes more difficult for the council to do. This is a partnership with private business, which is also part of the vitality of this community. And I think if we do nothing in regards to Stagecoach Village, and it has that 30% occupancy now, it's probably gonna fall lower if we do nothing than the current approval rating of Congress. So, that's not a good thing, so that's a risk. The other risk is that we enter into this agreement, and we try to use it as a catalyst, and I'm not quite convinced, like Councilman Durkin, there's not enough data for me that supports the conclusion, so therein the risk, that if we do this, it will jumpstart Stagecoach Village in a which, in a way in which we are all going to be happy, so that it becomes viable. But for me, the greater risk is in doing nothing, is in watching this project, which was built X number of years ago, and opened, it probably will be the worst possible times in American economic history of 2008. But it was a project that was built with a sensitivity to this community, its architecture, its style, its buildings, everything is Western. There's nothing out of character with the Town of Cave Creek and how this project was presented back by the developer of the town. 2008, we all know what that was about, but here we are now, X number of years later, six years later, and at 30% occupancy. So, I think the partnership, whether it's with a nonprofit or a private business, council has to always be very careful, because it's the citizens that we're involving in these matters. But I'm willing to go the other way and take the risk of trying this, and to see if this indeed does not work, to get this project started. In regards to bankruptcy and foreclosure, let's not kill ourselves, they're messy, whether you're dealing with lawyers or not lawyers, they're messy, messy affairs, so I will support this. Carrie DeRog, please.
Excuse me, Mr....
Yes, Councilman Jalen.
Just to be clear, gentlemen, tonight, if I understand, council, we are voting to approve this resolution with Exhibit A, as it stands in our packet, with only one modification, and that is the town's discretion for the days, and some yet to be penned, changes associated with how soon we have to do that. Is that, that's, the council needs to understand, I think, that that is what they are approving. That's the only thing that we're approving.
That's my understanding.
Okay. And we have now, the council also needs to understand that this is a changed agreement, and we may or may not succeed in actually having New Vista and the other entities sign that agreement. Having said that to you, gentlemen, I would like to respectfully remind you that we've sat up here in front of the citizens, and we've talked about risk. We are already gonna modify this. I urge you to reconsider a modification that would give one extra layer of protection to the town. I don't think it looks good to the citizens of Cave Creek when an opportunity is presented to the council, to, that is of obvious benefit to the town and its citizens, especially financially, for the, and to, for the council to walk away from that, because what we're voting on tonight is not a guaranteed agreement with New Vista, it's a modified thing which may or may not fly. We're gonna modify it. I urge you to reconsider directing staff in whatever actions we take tonight, to approach New Vista with those two changes we discussed and not just one.
There is still a discussion, then, everything you just said, that is my understanding, and that understanding is, New Vista may not accept the changes, the one change that we just made, and so that it'd be coming back to council anyway, as this is not acceptable.
It may or may not be coming back to council. If, if, gentlemen, we approve this as amended, and it does in fact, and New Vista does in fact find it acceptable, we will have, we will have achieved our right of first selection of a date, but we will also have left the town paying lawyer's fees for each and every business that fails within five years of opening its doors. I need you, you need to understand that.
I don't understand that. I'm not gonna understand that, Mike, and I'm sorry. I have a great deal of respect for your opinion here, but what you're doing is you're misleading the public, A, with this sort of the sky is falling hypothetical, that every business in there's gonna fail within five years. If a business fails, the owner still has the opportunity to sell his unit to a subsequent owner, who will step in his successor's interest and have the same obligation to pay the town's fees. And second of all, you're suggesting that we need an added layer of protection, without suggesting what that added layer of protection is, is quite frankly, is a stalking horse. It doesn't exist. There is a mechanism in place for when fees are owed and they're not paid, for the town to foreclose on a lien, and why would we reinvent the wheel here? I mean, I think it's just gonna make business more difficult to do in the Town of Cave Creek. I'm really frustrated by that.
Okay, well, I'm sorry that you're frustrated. Let me ask you a real simple question. In the language that exists in the document right now, in May 1st of next year, a business opens in Stagecoach Village. At that point, that business, and let's say he owns $17,000, and he, he will pay five years down the road eventually, $17,000 of capacity charges, which have been deferred. A year later, when his, that business fails, at that point, I don't think there's any getting around the fact that now the town is in a different legal position relative to those fees than he was, than the town was when that business was, had not failed. Period.
But you're making the assumption that that business's only asset and its only ability to pay the town's fees is whatever business enterprise he puts in there. He's going to have the actual, the space, he's gonna own a condominium here, it's an asset with value, backing up that obligation. It's the same concept when you get a mortgage.
Yeah, no, I'm all over that, and I understand all that. What I don't understand is, is why I should believe that as soon as that business fails, that the town's risk of those capacity charges has not gone enough. And the town's, the likelihood the town is going to have to expend funds to collect those charges has also gone. But can you, can you just answer that question? Has it or has it not put the town in a different risk category at the point that business failed?
Can I join in with a question, please? And that if you feel that language can be crafted that will protect the town?
I certainly feel language can be crafted that will, that will put, place the burden for paying the deferred fees on, on New Vista or whomever is leasing the property to this business owner, and further protect the town from, from... and further protect the town from having to become engaged in legal litigation to collect fees that it has deferred.
May I suggest a compromise? The council recess for 10 minutes, and legal council staff come up with a plan.
Can we just, can we call the vote for the motion on the floor before we do that?
Yeah, 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 yeah. Guess we got.
Just a point of reference, Brian Ferguson, who's a principal of New Vista is watching online, and he said they would accept the town's right of first review on the dates. They would accept that amendment.
Councilman Durkin.
I'm just saying, I've bought properties before that were in HOAs, and one of the things that happens in many of the HOA fees or end arrears come out of the seller's proceeds. So, we're not really talking about an obligation of a person, we're talking about obligation of the property. So, those payments would come from the property through the escrow, the sale of the actual property itself, the condominium itself. It's a normal real estate transaction that happens daily.
Do these, thank you for that point of clarification, maybe I'm mistaken, are these condominiums purchased by the business owners?
Yes.
Yeah, so I think there's, and people always just pull their marker. We want the marker back, here's the rest of the bill.
Well, that doesn't give us $17,000.
That's Ernie's point, and I think, quite frankly, he's right, because I was on a one-track mind thinking about what happens if there's a complete default and the property sits idle. But if the business is in default, and I think I did say this actually earlier, he still has that asset, now the business is big, and he's not using, he's going to sell the asset, and then to Ernie's point, those owed fees would then come out of escrow. So, we're never even going to get to the point of where there's an anchor. Yeah, there'll be legal fees associated with that, but running a government costs money. And to the extent that if we did have to foreclose on a lien, those costs would be tacked onto the price form.
If the suggestion is for non-payment, we look to New, whatever. If we're going to make that proposal, the owners, they never would have gotten this far. Why come to council if they were going to accept payment from anybody who defaults? We wouldn't even need this agreement. Okay? So, now to change this and go back to them and say, well, in case of default, you guys pay, it doesn't make sense.
Mayor Francis, a point of clarification, please, just as a citizen.
Wait a minute, excuse us, Hannah, but we're in discussion, man.
That's what I like to ask.
We're in discussion.
Why can't you both be, you're not running meetings, sir.
Mr. Mayor.
Why can't you postpone?
Hannah, that's not clarification, that figure applies, that's not a clarification. Councilman Durkin.
Gentlemen, okay, now that I understand, I was under the impression that the business owners were leasing the space from New Vista. Now that I understand that they are actually going to own the real property, I withdraw my concern about that.
Just to be perfectly clear, New Vista may in fact lease them, but if they do, then it is New Vista who has the obligation to pay the fee, in which case we'd be pursuing them for whatever fees there were anyway.
Counsel, the discussion has been good. The room, please, Carrie.
Councilman Durkin.
Yes.
Councilman McGuire.
Yes.
Councilman Stitzer.
No.
Vice Mayor Trink.
Yes.
Councilman Bunce.
Yes.
Councilman Monachino.
Yes.
Mayor Francis.
Yes, by a vote of six to one, the motion carries. Thank you, counsel. I would ask counsel, Agenda Item Number Three, the applicant has requested to continue. Is that to a date certain town manager or just to continue?
November 3rd.
November, November 3rd, okay. If I'm going to have a motion on Agenda Item Number Three to continue on November 3rd, move to continue Agenda Item Number Three or Agenda 3rd?
Second.
Okay, motion has been made for second. All those in favor of releasing the motion by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Refused. That's a record, we accept. The Vice Mayor Trink has repressed himself from the vote on continuance of Agenda Item Number Three. Counsel, let's take a five-minute recess here, and we'll finish up the evening. Thank you, counsel.
There's still discussion. Sorry, I can't.